If you can please stand if you are able. Fledgelysians to the five of the United States of America. Item three, roll call please.
Counselor Boganski.
Present.
Counselor Lewis. Counselor Balboni. Counselor Carey. Mayor Don and Counselor Pendleton.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, remarks. Good evening. This is just a friendly reminder when dealing with the hot weather. It is essential to take precautions to stay cool and hydrated. Wear lightweight and light colored clothing. Clothing, seek shade and avoid midday heat. And remember to check on family members. And since the council, town council does not meet in August, I would like to mention that the 24th Annual Special Olympic to Purchase Tickets. Sponsor an athlete, donate or learn more about the event. You can go to dreamride.org. There are many events taking place over the three days of this experience. You will not be disappointed. I have attended the opportu- I had the opportunity to attend the past two years and I'm hoping to attend again this year. The Special Olympians get to drive around in exotic cars like a Lamborghini or a McLaren and some antique cars. So it's good for them and they have their ceremony that afternoon on Saturday. And moving on to item five, adoption of the agenda. Counselor Boganski.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Any changes, deletions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to item six, communications and reports from the town manager. Mr. Maniscalco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In terms of my report, Governor's Highway Neighborhood Truck Route Letter. The Chief of Police and I sent out a little letter to over 90 businesses in the neighborhood of Governor's Highway. We requested that they reroute their truck traffic to Route 5 rather than through the more residential portions. The letter was sent out on July 5th, 2024. Additionally, it should be noted for the council and everybody else that due to the OSTA report that we did receive that directed us to take down the know-through truck traffic signs, we are taking those down. So those came down in the neighborhood today. I did talk with some of the residents over there who, after discussing it, the results of the report with them understood why we were taking them down, although discouraged. We are going to continue to work on making sure that truck traffic is reduced as much as possible in that neighborhood. Manchester Building Department Mutual Aid and Regionalization. I met with the general manager of Manchester on Wednesday, July 10th, to discuss mutual aid, discuss a mutual aid agreement for our building department in the event of an emergency call-out. We currently have a mutual aid agreement with Manchester for the Fire Marshal's Office. Over the next few months, the council can expect a draft to come before them for review and approval. Additionally, during the same meeting, we discussed the possibility of what a regional building department might look like. We have decided to do some additional evaluations to see if there is a way that a regional department can meet the needs of both communities while saving taxpayers' money. Also, in terms of new Eagle Scout forms, the staff in the planning department have been revising the process that scouts will need to take when doing an Eagle Scout project on town property. This is to ensure that we do not have any neighbor issues and adhere to our own regulations. Anybody in need of doing an Eagle Scout project should reach out to the Planning and Zoning Department to discuss those options. Also, in terms of 22 Wheeler Road at the direction of the council, I did have a meeting with the developer on Friday, July 12th. We discussed kind of their position in terms of the property there and what their plans are. As some of you are aware, they do have a zone, an application into the planning and zoning at this point. Not for an actual project, but I believe for a zone change. Essentially, we had a pretty long conversation about what they intend to do there. And I did express to them pretty clearly that it is our hope that that property would be commercial or industrial. They were very adamant that they've done their research on that property and based upon their market research at this time, they don't believe that there's a need for, or there's enough support for industrial or commercial uses on that property at this time. It did express to them a desire that we would want to do that. They're interested in trying to work with us in finding some type of solution. They did suggest possibly offering a portion of the property as a town park, as long as they could do residential on the other portion of some nature. How that will all transpire, I'm not really sure. But just wanted to make sure everybody was updated on that conversation. Also, a couple items not in my written report. We received notice from MDC that they're doing lead and copper line inspections. They sent out 187 mailers to different properties in a few different communities, including South Windsor. If you did receive that mailer, they do need to hear back from you. If they don't hear back from you, they will come to your door and request to talk with somebody and do the required inspection information. And then lastly, I had the opportunity today to meet with eight of our, eight young residents within our community at the library. And we sat and read, Isn't This an Amazing Book? So it was a great time at the library. I would suggest if you get the opportunity to read to any of our youth, it's a, it's a great opportunity, especially in the summer. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, I was just curious. Has there been any feedback from any of the businesses on, in the Governor's Highway neighborhood since the letters were sent out?
I have not heard from any of the businesses yet.
Okay. And then just on the potential mutual aid with Manchester, I think it's an excellent idea. I think, I think any, any chance that we have to regionalize services is a great thing. So thank you very much for talking to them and looking into it. And then finally, on Wheeler Road, is it? And forgive my ignorance of like commercial, industrial, all that kind of stuff. Is there any possibility of a business kind of like, like they have out in Windsor now at Day Hill Road? They have a huge area now that's like indoor playing fields, outdoor playing fields. There's a brewery there. Is it possible, is that, would that be considered a commercial?
That would be considered a commercial use. We discussed a number of those things and essentially the developers said very clearly that they've done a significant amount of market research and they do not believe the market has the ability to support commercial on that property. It did explain to them my concern with the idea, if you look back at the history of that property and the other property directly next to it in Manchester where Trader Joe's is. You know, basically, for whatever reason, and I don't know all the history of everything everybody was saying, but for whatever reason, obviously there were some hard feelings and essentially this company that owns both properties built a, a strip mall, basically blocking out the property that's in South Windsor. And, you know, I did express to them, you know, we've been working very closely with the owners and the management of Evergreen Walk. And they've put a serious, significant amount of money on the table to redevelop what Evergreen Walk would look like and be. And we've already seen some of the fruits of those labors, very easily. And I expressed to them that, you know, maybe they need to think about doing something similar for developing this property and making it commercially viable. I appreciate the fact that they did some research and looked into it. But I do believe that if they were to look at doing some reinventa- some reinventing of the current strip mall that's there, they could probably figure out a way to make that additional property that much better.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Deputy Mayor, Sir Acusa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm in agreement. I think an athletic facility there would do wonders. I go to church in Farmington right next to FSA in that building seven days a week. My kids just were at camp all last week. 8:30 in the morning, full parking lot, tournament's going on. And I, I just find it hard to, I don't know, just trust them when they say they've done their research. Because if you've ever driven through the parking lot at their other property, it's probably the worst parking lot I've been in, in America. So.
I don't, I don't disagree.
With the South Windsor Soccer Club alone, I mean, that place would be, be filled. So that's a great idea and I fully support something like that. Thank you.
Counselor Pendleton?
Thank you. Mr. Maniscalco, the signs that were take down, taken down that said, talked about the ordinance with the trucks. I had mentioned it before, if we could put up a sign that says best truck route and just kind of lead them a subtle suggestion with an arrow, you know, to re- you know, a little subtle suggestion.
Correct.
You know, so maybe we can put signs up on those posts that are now vacant. That can lead the trucks in the correct direction of Route 5. The other thing I want to say is, I had a little confusion on that letter from MDC with the inventory letter. I, I'm understanding it to say that their inventory, that they've checked their books and their inventory. So now they need to get with the homeowners to confirm or deny their inventory. Is that what this is about?
I think it's, I think it's both sides. So from looking at the handout which I've got over here, they're talking about both the, the public side of the MDC infrastructure as well as the private side of the private property owner. So from what I can tell, it seems like both sides. But I'm sure, you know, they've got experts that are going to have those conversations more. For whatever reason, it seems like they've identified 187 homes that they're going to be, you know, reaching out to. So we want to make sure that those people do pay attention to their mail and.
Well, that's what concern, are they going to like, oh, we have to replace all our pipes in our house and our water pipe? Or is it the pipe going to their home? Or is it just to recheck their inventory? It was a very vague letter.
It is very vague. It's not clear.
It isn't clear.
It's not clear what the results of it are going to be. It sounds to me like.
I mean, they do, they may want to do a physical inspection. So it could include the pipes within the home.
Potentially. You know, my takeaway from the letter is obviously there's been a change in some laws associated with, you know, the water issues that happened. I believe it was Missouri. And probably they now have a new requirement to go out and survey and send in some results for how that is all supposed to work. So it's just a matter of, you know, what comes out of that isn't just not really explained or very clear.
Correct. So, and the only other thing that I want to mention as far as Wheeler Road is considered, or is concerned, is that the residents that live there would not like to see commercial and residential there for the fact of the tractor trailers, the noise, the count. If it's an industry and it'd be running 24/7, I'm sure the residents around there wouldn't be very happy with that. On the same hand, you know, to have a residential there would then also pose more traffic. And that is a nightmare, a nightmare during Christmas time to get in there, get out of there. And I'm sure the Board of Ed would not like residential there. So it's kind of a sticky situation on both sides. So, you know, doing a sports facility, something like that would have limited nighttime use maybe, but have, you know, extended hour nighttime use, like a brewery or something. But then to have the sports there and things like that and it would be weekends or nighttime games or what have you, that isn't a bad idea.
And I think, yeah, there's a lot of good ideas and a lot of things that we could potentially hypothesize should go there. I know I've thrown a number of them out. At the end of the day, if the developer is not willing to cut the check for doing it or can't find somebody willing to do it, I, you know, I, we can't make them do a certain thing. So, you know, we can try to persuade them and coax them in the right direction. But beyond that, I, I don't have a whole lot of other tools. So.
No, thank you. And enjoy your summer.
Thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Maniscalco, with, thank you for sending out the letters to those companies. Is there a next step? Is there a phase two? Like we've sent the letters, now we'll do a calling campaign or?
Well, so the next step was to let everybody know tonight that we sent the letters out and hear back, any feedback from anybody in the res- in the neighborhood. If there's been a change, hopefully we hear back from them. If there's been a negative change and if there's been a positive change, most likely we won't hear back from anybody. But hopefully we do see some, some change from them. If any of the businesses have questions or anything else, you know, the letter does, you know, direct them to reach out to myself and the Chief of Police. So.
Do you have a timeline of if I hear back from them by such and such a date or?
Yeah, I mean, I, my thought is if somebody's going to have a problem, they're going to have a problem in the next few weeks. So we should probably hear back in the next few weeks. Probably by the end of the month, we would, you know, go from there.
And with regard to the, the regionalization, again, I think that's not a bad idea either. Are there any state monies on the table for that?
So there is a, there is a regionalization grant that we can get through the Capital Region Council of Governments. The one caution I want to make, just from past experience with looking at regional projects, is typically we can control the cost from going up significantly, but we can't typically reduce the cost. So we're trying to do it in a way that's as efficient as possible. We did go down this road of looking at regionalizing a building department a few years ago. And unfortunately, working with those other communities that we were at that time, they actually ended up poaching all our building department staff. So I don't want to go down that road again. But I do think there's some potential with Manchester and some synergy, particularly with our location and how business-friendly Manchester is and we are. And I, I do think there's some, some good possibilities that could come out of it.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm assuming with the MDC that that's only including folks who get water provided from MDC, it does include those on wells?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else has questions for the town manager? Seeing none. Thank you. Moving on to item seven, public input for items on the agenda. Public input shall not exceed 30 minutes. When recognized by the mayor, the speaker shall approach the lectern, give their name and address. Speakers shall avoid personal attacks or impugning or alleging an improper motive to any person. The speakers may address the council on any item on the agenda. The speakers shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward at this time? Going once? Okay, twice. Seeing none, we have a letter that was requested to be read into the record. Counselor Fitzgerald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Town Council members. My name is Bonnie Driscoll and I have operated a family childcare service on Hayes Road for almost three decades. I'm here to speak on behalf of the eight remaining providers in town regarding the tax abatement for family childcare providers. Our contribution as childcare providers is invaluable to the families in South Windsor and the surrounding towns. With the dedication of a 50-hour work week, we adhere to state regulations and stay compliant for our yearly inspections and fulfill our tax obligations. We are always accessible to our clients and the children become a part of an extended family. During the pandemic, family childcare providers were considered essential workers. Our commitment ensured that families had reliable childcare support, enabling them to navigate the challenges of remote work without disruption. We didn't close up shop in the face of adversity. Our invaluable service continued. However, I would be remiss not to point out that the number of family childcare providers has diminished over the years due to escalating costs associated with maintaining these in-home services. This has left a significant void in childcare options for families who would typically turn to us for a more economical solution. As the referral coordinator for the Family Childcare Providers Association for the past 20 years, I have fielded many calls from families in distress urgently seeking home childcare. I have had to explain that their options are limited. Many express disbelief and panic as they realize they may have to forfeit their jobs or deal with the financial strains of higher tuition at a daycare center. In 2022, legislation was passed empowering towns to abate up to 100% of property taxes for licensed daycare facilities, including in-home daycares. The abatement can be extended for up to five years and aims to facilitate the opening of new daycare businesses and address the shortage we are experiencing in South Windsor. If implemented, this tax relief would help current providers maintain reasonable tuition rates and continue operating long-term. I am here tonight to request that you consider a tax abatement for us, the current family childcare providers who are dedicated to the profession and the South Windsor community. It would be beneficial for South Windsor to be a role model and set an example of affirmative action in helping current providers and potential ones. This in turn would help families in need of care, support local small businesses like ours and stay within our community. In considering this tax abatement, I ask you to remember the commitment and essential role that family childcare providers play in enriching our community. Thank you for your time and consideration. And that is from Bonnie Driscoll on Hayes Road in South Windsor. Thank you, Counselor Fitzgerald.
Still seeing none for item seven. Moving on to item eight, adoption of minutes of previous meeting. Counselor Fitzgerald?
All right. I move to approve the July 1st, 2024 Town Council regular meeting minutes. Be it resolved that the Town Council, South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting of July 1st, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Any changes? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 8B.
All right. Approval of the July 1st, 2024 Town Council Public Hearing Meeting Minutes. Library Chiller Project Use of 100,000 of capital, capital non-recurring funds. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the public hearing of July 1st, 2024 to receive citizen input on the transfer of funds from capital non-recurring in the amount of $100,000 to the Library Chiller Replacement Project Account Number 44303-
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 8C.
Approval of the July 1st, 2024 Town Council Public Hearing Meeting Minutes. Proposed smoking ordinance in town parks. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the public hearing of July 1st, 2024 to receive citizen input on the proposed smoking ordinance in town parks.
We have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Moving on to item nine. Communications Liaisons Officers and Boards Directly Responsible to the Council. Counselor Fitzgerald?
So the Council Subcommittee on the Naming of Public Buildings and Lands met this past week.
That's actually item number 10.
Oh. Oh. Oh, okay.
So you can take a rest for a second. Any other? Counselor Balboni?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. PBC met last Wednesday regarding Pleasant Valley. There's 22 more items on the punch list. Those are mostly scheduled for the fall. They have to do landscaping. They're waiting for the DOT to give feedback on the flashing beacon. The contingency is the same. There was a breach in the silt from the front lawn to the neighbor's house, which drained into their pool. It was immediately taken care of. And steps were taken to mitigate further issues. They put out fence, hay and rock around it. That's all the information I have for tonight because I think they're going to cover the rest about Orchard Hill.
Counselor Pendleton?
May I just ask you to repeat that again, please, about the silt? And Mr. Maniscalco, there may be a question?
Certainly. So there was a breach in the silt from the front lawn that made it all the way to the neighbor's house. It drained into their pool. That was immediately taken care of and steps were taken to mitigate further issues. They put in fencing, hay, as well as rock to prevent it from happening again.
Okay, thank you. May I, Madam Mayor? Yes, Counselor Pendleton?
Thank you. Mr. Maniscalco, I saw the DOT trucks there, the state trucks working. And I saw the trap rock on the side where the silt goes down into the brook. Are we, are we still having issues with that, do you know? And it goes into the stream into the pond?
I think there's some challenges with some of the runoff from that site. I haven't heard of issues over at the pond by VMP, if that's the one you're referring to. I haven't heard of those issues. But I do think there are some water management issues on the site. And as Counselor Balboni reported, the resident next door did have an issue with their pool that was brought to my office's attention. And we got it forward to the project managers for the project. And, you know, it was taken care of pretty quickly. And I, I'm hopeful that the measures they put in place will be able to stop a second issue from happening again.
I know Jeff was looking into that, Jeff Fulger, when he was here. Could we get an update on that, please, with the pond and the runoff? And where we stand with that? Because I know that they were going to try to mitigate that and I'm not sure where we're at with that.
I believe they brought a limnologist on board to help mitigate those issues after the, the entire construction was complete. So.
And I know that they were going to try to do some. But could we get an update, please?
Sure.
In August? No, I mean, if you could just email us, that'd be great. If you know before our next meeting.
Yeah, I can try to find something out and email you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Carey?
Planning and zoning met last Tuesday. They reviewed all of the comments they received on the POCD. Discussed which ones they were going to accept, what they were going to modify. And then they passed the Plan of Conservation and Development. So that's complete. And they also had a few temporary permits to renew.
Okay. Seeing no other. Moving on to item 10, reports from committees. Counselor Fitzgerald?
Back again. Thank you. So the Subcommittee on the Naming of Public Buildings and Lands met. We met last week and we are in the process of revising the guidelines and procedures for naming of public lands. So those guidelines and procedures are in the process of being edited and hopefully we'll have a fresh copy to look at soon. And more to come.
And probably be bringing forward at the first meeting is a resolution to accept the new procedures and guidelines.
Thank you.
No other reports? Okay, moving on to item 11, consent agenda. Counselor Carey?
Resolution Appointing Patrick Kupchunis as an alternate member- Resolution Appointing Patrick Kupchunis as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission and postpones consideration of this motion until the Town Council's next regularly scheduled meeting. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Patrick Kupchunis as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending December first, two thousand and twenty-five, to place the unexpired term of Michael Ulette and postpones consideration of this motion until the Town Council's next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
There's a consent agenda. It's supposed to be one and two together.
Oh, sorry. Resolution Appointing Susan Burnham as an alternate member of the Stark District Commission and postpones consideration of this motion until the Town Council's next regularly scheduled meeting. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Susan Burnham as an alternate member of the Stark District Commission for a term ending November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven, and postpones consideration of this motion until the Town Council's next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, we have a second. Counselor Lewis, that said second? We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Moving on to eleven B. There's no eleven B. We have no eleven C. And twelve is unfinished business, having none. Moving on to item thirteen, new business, Parks and Recreation Facility Update. We have Matthew Montana, Chair of the Public Building Commission, Kathy Doherty, Vice Chair of Public Building Commission, Chuck Warrington of Colliers, and Tom Akari of Q A and M Architects to be present.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Delnicki, Deputy Mayor of Syracuse, and council members. My name's Kathy Doherty. I'm the Vice Chair of the Public Building Commission. As directed by the Town Council in September of two thousand and twenty-three, the Public Building Commission was given the task to work cooperatively with the Parks and Recreation Department to identify, study, and recommend a location for the Parks and Rec Office. In an effort to be fiscally responsible and to utilize existing space, the current council asked us to review the existing Orchard Hill facility and see if it could be remodeled in several phases. We retained the architectural services of Quisenberry, Akari, and Malik to work closely with the Public Building Commission and the Parks and Recreation Department to find economical solutions for repurposing the old Orchard Hill Elementary School. Architect Tom Akari and his team have put together some preliminary, and I would like to emphasize preliminary, floor plans and site plan layouts that demonstrate the programmatic needs requested by the Parks and Rec Department. So I'm going to turn this portion over to Mr. Akari, who will show you some potential fit outs and phasing of the project.
Good evening, Councilors. Tom R. Carey, Principal with Q A and M Architecture, one nine five Scott Swamp Road, Farmington, So our exploration of the existing building in Orchard Hill School is a little more in-depth than putting some concept plans together, and I have our progress to show you this evening. But a couple of things we had to do first that were really essential to the exercise was, one, to take a look at the program. So Parks and Rec put, in simple terms, a wish list together, which is a program, all the things they'd like to see in an ideal community center. Our firm was partially chosen because we've done almost thirty community centers throughout the state, and we relied on some of that experience working with other communities to evaluate that program and see what makes good sense. We went through the program in great detail and narrowed it down, consolidated it, in a way that created a certain amount of efficiencies, removed some elements that didn't necessarily make sense. For instance, one of the program elements was a fifty-meter Olympic-sized swimming pool with a dedicated diving well. And there are only a couple of these in the entire region. Most communities have a competition pool that has six to eight lanes, is twenty-five yards or meters long, and has an incorporated pool, diving well, within one end of the pool. So that's just one example of our opportunities to look at the overall program. We refined the program to approximately sixty thousand total square feet, and based on our experience working with other communities, we felt that was a very responsible point to move forward with. The other thing we did is we did a detailed code assessment and capital needs assessment of the existing Orchard Hill School, which you can see here with some of the adjacent fields. What we tried to determine within the building is identify what are some of the shortcomings of the building. There are a number of code issues in the building and egress issues in the building. We worked with the existing fire safety officer and building official to identify those, as well as identify all of the challenges to accessibility that exist within the building. Primarily, the biggest issue is that the second level of what we'll call the north wing of the building, or the left wing of the building, only has one fire stair, one exit from that upper level. So that level is technically unoccupiable by current building codes. There's no elevator access to those floor levels, so there are a few other issues in the building. There are some envelope issues. The roof is not in great shape, and the perimeter of the building should be protected, as well as all of the existing temporary classrooms that are on the building, portable classrooms that are put on over the years, are in really bad shape and in disrepair. So we looked at those existing conditions to build the basis for what we think a solution going forward is. Finally, we did some site investigations. What you're seeing here is a consolidated survey of all the adjacent parcels. The building committee asked us in our investigation, not just to look at the Orchard Hill School, but to look at the three adjacent schools and all the playfields, to see how a consolidated solution might work best on the site. I just want to say thank you to PDA associates. As a courtesy to the community, they put together surveys, because the community did not have surveys. We spoke with Ms. Lipe. They did not have surveys of all three parcels that could be put together. We reached out to Peter DiMali and his team, and he put this together as a, basically a gift to the community. So I know he's done a lot of work here, but I just wanted to give him credit for that. It was a great help in having us explore the possibilities. So when we were looking at the program, we quickly determined that what we should do, or what makes most sense, we think, for the community on various levels, is to take the major program elements, that being a big gymnasium, three courts, a fieldhouse, so to speak, and an auditorium. Those were the big key components of the program. And consider them as a separate element, a separate building. We looked at different ways to add on to the existing building. But when you see the site and some of the diagrams I'm going to show you, it made more sense to deal with that as a separate standalone project and treat the rehabilitation of Orchard Hill School as a core community center, Parks and Rec Center, as a separate piece. So we looked at the site overall first to try and identify some issues that would make sense, or some solutions that would make sense. The first concept that we looked at, and you can see the diagram here, includes, at the school, the creation of a new entrance. That's in red, so that we can add an elevator, provide full accessibility to the entire facility, and provide access to all of the levels. Two, at the sort of, what is the west side of the site, or the bottom side of the site, we're recommending removing the loop drive. There is no longer need for the bus loop drive at this site. We're recommending providing new parking directly adjacent to the building. This can have handicap accessible parking and would allow for better access for patrons, more parking, and better access for seniors using the facility. We're recommending provision of removing the portable classrooms, which are at the back of the building. I don't think this has an arrow that'll work. But creating additional parking at the backside of the building, or the east side. This parking would be configured in a way that would have a loop, so that we could provide a drop-off at the east side of the building. You can see those two sort of tan areas called play area. Right in between those, on the top side, would be a new dedicated entrance for the preschool programs, daycare programs that are at the school. This would allow dedicated drop-off, secure drop-off for the daycare programs, and separate access to the building, so that general public use and daycare use are isolated. At the same time, you can see we would provide dedicated fenced-in play areas on both sides of that building. And when we get into the building renovation concepts, I can show you how that will work. In this configuration, we're proposing a separate structure, separate phase structure, that would be a fieldhouse that has a gymnasium and an auditorium in it, and that would be at the east side of the site, closest to the school. And in this configuration, we're recommending a loop road that connects to Arnold Way. I'll go through my whole presentation, and then maybe we can open it for questions and answers. But if there's something that you really feel necessary asking, please don't hesitate. I think it can be a little loose. The second scheme is very similar in configuration, but we changed the configuration of the secondary building. You could see that the additional building of gym and auditorium would take more of an L-shaped configuration. This configuration would allow more parking adjacent to the soccer fields and would tuck the playground into what is the southeast corner of the site. But renovations to the Orchard Hill School building would be similar. And then the building committee asked us to explore a third option. And this is an option that, overall, the committee likes. What this would do would be to relocate the baseball field that is directly to the north of the building and put it in the loop road of Arnold Way. And then a new, the new aquatics center and gymnasium would be located directly to the north of the Orchard Hill School, putting the new building in the center of the complex, surrounded by all the recreation fields, with a playground at the center of the field. And then the creation of an accessway that runs north-south between Arnold Way and the Orchard Hill School site, the new Orchard Hill School. This would allow for parking directly adjacent to the fields, handicap accessibility to a number of the fields, communication between the school and the community center, and it would also allow the baseball field to no longer sort of disrupt programming on the site in that, right now, baseballs are basically landing on the school. We thought this was a strong solution. This does not ultimately take away any field space. This improves the athletic fields, provides access to all the sites, and is a good long-term solution. Additionally, building the second part of the program, Aquatic Center and Gym, to the north side of the facility, would be much easier to accomplish. We'd be able to provide more parking directly adjacent to the building, because there's less topography there. One of the key reasons why we separated the building program into renovation of Orchard Hill School and the creation of an aquatics facility and gym facility is that we believe, and the committee sort of agrees, is that this would give the community really an opportunity to phase this project in, as opposed to building it as a part of the Orchard Hill School. This would allow the Orchard Hill School project to be Phase One, get that part of the project completed, and then the second portion of the project, whether it's Aquatic Center or its fieldhouse, could be a Phase Two and potentially even broken into three phases. This gives the community a lot of flexibility financially in terms of how much do we want to take on at any one point. So these are plans of the existing Orchard Hill School, which we're recommending be Phase One of the project. You can see that on the right-hand side, there is a multifunction room in the bottom right. There are classrooms in the upper right, four of which are currently daycare classrooms, four which aren't being used. In the center, or connector of the building, that is where the Parks and Rec offices are. And then to the left of the building, in the bottom left, is the existing gym auditorium, and then there are classrooms, locker rooms, et cetera. This is the upper-level plan. The plan, the building is split-level, so when you enter the mid connector, you actually have to go down to one level and up to one level. And this is the level I was indicating. There's no, there are not two code-compliant exits from this level. This existing stair on the lower side is not enclosed. It does not provide a direct way to the outside. Additionally, there's no access to this upper level for patrons with physical challenges. So this plan was our first stab at a floor plan, and overall embodies all the things that the committee and Molly and our team recommended. So we'd recommend an expansion of the vestibule lobby in the center of the plan with the addition of an elevator and a new code-compliant stairwell. This would provide accessibility to both levels, as well as fire egress and escape from the upper level. Directly adjacent to the entrance on the right, you can see in what is in orange color would be the administrative space. That would be the core of the program space. To the right of that is the multifunction room. This would stay in its current configuration size. It would be refinished. This is an existing asset that makes good sense. The original program had a wish list of a slightly bigger space, but financially, we don't believe it makes significant sense to expand that space, and we think that programmatically it'll serve the community in its current size. And then the kitchen in the bottom right would be revitalized. Again, the kitchen's a great asset. It's a full commercial kitchen. We believe it should be revitalized and used, serve the community. On the top side of the plan, we're recommending that the remainder of spaces be renovated for daycare use, and that you provide direct exterior access space to the exterior of those spaces. So what this would do is it would expand the daycare capacity to double what its current capacity is. So what this would do is it would expand the daycare capacity to double what its current capacity is from four classrooms to eight classrooms. This would expand Parks and Rec's ability to provide that mission to the community. It would also provide additional revenue for added programming for the Parks and Rec program or the community as a whole. And then at the north of this or the top of this, of that wing, we would provide a dedicated entrance. So drop off and pickup of daycare students could happen separate from programming. This provides a higher level of security to the daycare students. And then on the left side of the building, we're recommending that the existing auditorium stay in its current configuration. That could be used for dance, exercise and fitness programming. And then we're recommending the inclusion, the creation of program spaces such as game rooms, fitness and dance. And we're trying to create operable partitions between these spaces so that they can have flexibility in program sizes. This was a second concept which was recommended by the committee, which keeps the same floor plan, but expands the lobby, makes it a little bit bigger so that there can be a cafe space, a little more interaction space, a little more waiting space for registration and pre-function space for activities. On the second floor of the center, you can see how the proposed elevator and stair addition would now intersect at the middle of the plan, allowing for more activity spaces, meeting spaces for the community, arts and craft space and renovated bathroom facilities. Here's a rendering and this is a loose rendering of what the entrance addition could possibly look like. It would allow a new connective tissue between all the program spaces. Of course, it would have to be a two story space to allow for the height of the elevator. Additionally, we're proposing that some of the spaces receive new windows. Here you can see on the left of the upper image that we would add some windows to the front gymatorium auditorium space. So that space would have a lot of natural light, could be used in a number of different ways. And these are some additional renderings. One of the benefits to expanding the space is we would create direct access from the classrooms to the exterior of the building. This building is used for a significant portion of the Parks and Rec summer camps. So that would allow summer camp programming to happen outside and then have direct access to the classroom spaces. We presented this concept to the building committee and to Molly and her team. The scheme is considered very favorable. And we've gotten to the point where we're now bringing it to the council for review. And the committee will be making some decisions on what their next steps should be moving forward. So if you have any questions, I'd love to take them at this time.
If you don't mind, I'd like to go first. I knew this plan was coming. Great job on the designs and everything. My first thought was when they moved to Orchard Hill, the main important piece was making it ADA compliant, which is the elevator. Out of this whole concept one, besides the vestibule where you have the 800 square feet with the elevator, what else is that? And then I see your renderings of the second floor. Is there any way just to do the ADA compliant piece? Just to get it ADA compliant because that was the biggest concern ADA compliant. And then the back entrance because as you state, there's, there was no egress.
So the simple answer is no and yes. And that sounds complicated, but so yes, we can, we can build a new vestibule and the stair. In order to do that, we have to create a cut through through the upper level. So some renovation work would have to be done to accommodate that. But yes, the addition could be accommodated right now as a standalone project with the work associated with it to accommodate accessibility. But part of the accessibility upgrades also will include bathroom renovations. Bathrooms will have to be renovated to provide full accessibility. Currently, there are no accessible stalls in those bathrooms.
Is that near like the activity hub and all that stuff?
Yes, so there's actually two sets of bathrooms. You can see them on sort of the center left and the center right of the plan. Those would have to be updated as a part of the project.
Which is part of the ADA compliant?
Part of the ADA compliant piece. There also are some key infrastructure issues that will need to be addressed as a part of this. The roof would, the roof really has to be done. Before you make any investment in this building, you should re-roof the building. Also, the mechanical systems are nearing the end of their life. That can be addressed as a separate project. But that is something that potentially should be considered as a part of a bare bone solution to the project. Ultimately, what the committee has made, has brought to my attention is that you know, we have to be financially conscious about how we approach this overall vision, this master plan. And we've tried to be sensitive to that. So the idea would be is that Orchard Hill School renovation would be sort of the first phase of any master plan. That first phase could be broken down into sub-phases depending on what the funding looks like, what the availability of funding looks like. In short, yes, the, this renovation concept could be pared down to a smaller project.
So when you're saying the sub-phase, so the first thing would be important to do is the roof.
So the roof, you want to protect the asset no matter what you do. So you do the roof and provide the accessibility and code upgrades, meet all the code compliance issues. I'd recommend a mechanical electrical plumbing upgrade, particularly the mechanical system. It's really near the end of its life. And then programmatic upgrades and changes. For instance, renovate, you know, renovation of the additional daycare programming space, interior renovations to accommodate programming, new programming. Those could be done at a later date.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate your presentation. That was great. Everything looks beautiful. I want to first commend Mr. Montana and Ms. Doherty for really listening to the request. I think what you've executed is exactly what we were looking for. And kind of, I was scratching my head wondering why we didn't include this in the first go around. So I will have you speak on that in a moment here because I have a couple of questions for you, sir. The exercise room, that large area that just says exercise, I think it's on the left side. Is that the plan, and if you don't know this, maybe Kathy does. Is that something that the residents would be like paying for a membership for, like a gym type space? Something like that because it looks like there's a juice bar. So is that exercise area a large area where folks could go work out?
So obviously those are programmatic questions, but the answer is no. The idea, the exercise space would be typically in community centers, what we're seeing is a big exercise room that's used for dance classes, fitness classes. We do not envision this as a gym, health fitness gym. Community centers tend to have some programmatic elements like a small gym component. But it's really careful, we deal with this in all of our community centers that we do, that we do not compete with other resources in the community. So the goal is let's not create a sort of a health center or health club that is a subsidized program element that competes against other health clubs in the community. So the goal is this is, and this is a fitness activity dance space that would be programmed by Parks and Recreation. It would not be a health club.
Okay. The reason why I asked that is because I saw like juice bar there. And I don't know if that was just a touch that you put on with your design.
So just if I could opine on that too. We recommend in all of our new state of the art community centers that in the pre-function space, which is either a vestibule, you can see like a little, you know, quote unquote bar. Essentially, this is really just a countertop that could be used for pre-function services. Someone could put cookies there, somebody could put a Keurig device there. It's just a pre-function meeting space.
Could rent out the space for someone wanted to do a party. Got it.
Exactly.
Awesome. So I, I mean, my first comment would be whatever, I think all the phases or concepts look good. I think probably the one that's going to cost the least would probably be the one to focus on and really narrow down. My next hope is that Ms. Doherty could maybe come up just for, there's not really anybody here in person, but anybody watching or goes back and watches the meeting. Do you mind just explaining what happened earlier? And maybe the, the cost to those things as far as the new buildings? Just for folks that really don't know why we're talking about this.
Sure. So, gosh, over a year ago, could be two years ago, there was a committee that was formed to look for a new home for the Parks and Rec Committee temporarily and then a more permanent home. This was, this was when they were still at the now high school annex. And the, the quick answer was there was a vacant building in town Orchard Hill School and we could move Parks and Rec in there temporarily. Also, this committee looked at various spaces around South Windsor. One was the priest property. The other was Nevers Road Park area, kind of where the farmer's market is. And then the third one was the Orchard Hill School site. And the priest property was pretty much, pretty much moved. It was not, it didn't hold a lot of water because of challenges that we have with the state being able to make left hand turns or right hand turns in or out. Also, the, the egress from the property from going through that little neighborhood that's there, we would have to push through that neighborhood. There was a lot of challenges and the state had already refused a, I believe it was a right hand turn lane going in and out of that property. So that was pretty much removed from our thought process. And we came down to two areas, Nevers Road Park and the Orchard Hill School. When we looked at purchase, when we looked at a building, building new, the cost was roughly $80 million. None of which was going to be reimbursed by the state unlike our schools where we get a significant portion that would be reimbursed. So I believe it was January or February of this year, right around there. Matt Montana and myself met with Mayor and Deputy Mayor, Mr. Maniscalco and I can't remember who else was in the meeting, that said, look at the existing building and see what you could come up with. And that's when, and looking at the resolution that was passed in September of 2023 to look for a location and plans and what could happen. And at that time, we hired the, Mr. Akari to come up with an idea using the existing building and what would be a phase in type of a project, keeping in mind fiscal responsibility. And, and to see what we could do to make that building work now. So that's probably, it's pretty much where we are.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I think speaking for most people in town, the $80 million is definitely a tough number to think about. I don't know if this has kind of been calculated yet or been talked about, but do you have any sort of comparison to what something like this would cost? And I'm sure one of the gentlemen behind you could answer that.
So our next step would be to actually put a rough order of magnitude cost together based on this approach. I do believe this approach would be the most cost effective way to accomplish approximately half of your program. If you look at the wish list program of 60,000 square feet, which I believe ultimately is defendable, half of that is auditorium and field house. And to some degree, that's why that was isolated, separated as a separate structure for phasing because the entire remainder of the program fits into the existing 30,000 square foot building for the most part. Not only is this approach fiscally responsible, but it's sustainably responsible. We're going to reuse an existing asset. So my gut feeling is that this makes the best financial sense to meet half of that program. And the committee will be working on putting a cost estimate together to do this portion of the work. I'm sure that that will be looked at, evaluated. And then once that number is prepared, then the council and the committee can give us direction as where to go from that bench point. Should we reduce it? Should we make it bigger?
Yeah. And again, that's, that's was my hope when asking those folks to, to come back to you guys and ask for that phased approach, you know, because maybe a referendum could go out for phase one, you know? And if people want to do it, great. If they don't, understandable. And then maybe phase two gets denied and that never happens. But at least, you know, potentially the main building, the main structure that's serving kids and Parks and Rec can get done. So I, I do like the plan. Obviously got to see where the money's at, but thanks for all your hard work.
Yeah. I would, I would guesstimate, I'm not going to give you a number, but I would guesstimate that the cost of renovating this 30,000 square foot building compared to the cost of building a brand new building for, of 30,000 square feet would be about half.
Yeah.
So this phase would be about a quarter of the cost of what, you know, somewhere's between a quarter and a little bit less of what entirely brand new site developed building will cost.
That's kind of what I was thinking about $20 million to renovate the space. And it's good to know that people are putting in the hard work to try to figure out what's not only best for the town, but also more fiscally responsible. So again, I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Council Lewis, did you want to, you had your light on?
Sure, yeah, I did. I had a couple of questions, I think. You kind of already explained one of them, but you said 60,000 square feet was responsible or defendable. I said, that's a lot. What makes it responsible? But I think you kind of already answered that because that's the space amount that'd be required for the desired programs. Is that correct?
That's correct. So 60,000 square feet was what was originally, which was ultimately sort of was whittled down to for an ideal community center for the town of South Windsor. We looked at a number of other communities that have full community centers like Bloomfield. And we looked at Manchester, we, or Mansfield. We looked at Willimantic and a number of community centers, communities of your size that were looking for sort of the, the ideal community center. 60,000 makes sense when you look at the total program for what you want to accomplish. But at the end of the day, the question is, is okay, long term, 60,000 is a responsible number for an ideal community center. But the question is what can you afford? What can you afford now? And how could we break the master plan into pieces so that the community could choose to, to buy that off at different times in the future or all at one? or all at once, or in different phases?
Appreciate that. Um, I was curious, uh, on, on one of your pictures, you had play areas on two sides of the building. What's, what's the dimensions of those play areas?
Oh, so here it's shown here. I would have to get you that exact dimension. This is diagrammatic, but the state has requirements of outdoor play space of fifty square feet per children. I believe it's fifty, maybe misspeak spoken at this point. But, um, the idea is to size those areas, um, according to what the maximum capacity of the classrooms are. So, right now, the students are walked, um, out of the building, across the parking lot to the playscape. Um, it's really more apropos that they would go right from the classroom to a play area. The cost to do this type of work is, is relatively low. And it makes sense to have a secure space directly adjacent to the building that the daycare students can use.
Thank you. Uh, the ADA part is, got a lot to do, the second floor, and I'm looking at the plans, the second floor is a little bit smaller. What would it do, the program, if we didn't have, if we just did away with the second, no second floor?
Well, that's what you have now. So, that space just doesn't get used.
Do we need a second floor?
Um, that's your choice as a community not to use that space. You currently have, um, a program need of sixty thousand square feet. Long-term master plan vision of sixty thousand square feet. Um, adding an elevator and a stair allows you to capture, um, seven, the five hundred square feet or so, um, towards that program demand. So, you can choo- you, you as an owner can choose to do that or not. This council can choose to say, "Let's do it or not do it." I'm just giving you the information that you can use to make your decision.
When you go back to your team and you, and you work out some numbers, will that include the HVAC systems and power systems for all the separate buildings?
Ultimately, yes.
Okay, I imagine that's gonna be huge, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Pendleton?
Um, because the counselors that are sitting here were not here back in twenty twenty-three, I'd like to take a five-minute break for the clerk of the council to get us the original resolution from September twenty twenty-three. That was the charge of the council that will tell you what we asked for, because we don't have the background history on this project, um, on what was asked for in the charge from the council to the Public Building Commission. So, if we could just take a five-minute break, I'd, for her to get us the original request for the public building, and then give us time to read that, please.
Okay.
Because we might be violating what the request was. We don't even have that in front of us. You, do you know what the request was? I do. Uh, uh, I'm gonna make that decision by myself, Toby? No. We should all be educated with the background history on this project. And the charge that was given to the Public Building Commission to make sure that we're meeting that charge. You don't know the charge. You don't know the, you guys weren't here. So, I'm requesting that we get the original resolution from September twenty twenty-three for us to review it before we continue. And thank you for being here, just so we can review it and look at what the charge is.
Yeah, and Kathy just gave it to you.
Right, Kathy just ran out. If we could just take a five-minute.
Sure, five-minute, right, I'm, all those in favor?
I made a motion, I don't know.
Yep, all those in favor, there's a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, very odd, five-minute recess. I think our five minutes is up. Anyone, Counselor Carey, did you have, okay, now you have your light on. Like to bring the meeting back to order? And, Mr. Akari? Counselor Pendleton, I mean, uh, Counselor Carey?
Thank you very much. Th- this was very, very helpful. I have a very quick question. This four thousand square feet space down here, is that big enough for like a basketball court today?
So, it does have a basketball court in it, but it is not big enough for an actual, like, basketball court. If you go in that space, it's a, it's like, um, a little kid's basketball court, and it runs basically wall-to-wall in the space. It's, it was our assessment when we were looking at the space that you really need, you, you really need a bigger gym, right? The program wants to have a community-based fieldhouse gymnasium. Most of the community centers we're designing has a full high school court running lengthwise with two sort of middle school courts running the opposite su- direction. That's, at a minimum, that supports a lot of the community recreation programs. It's ideal. We don't believe it makes sense to try and expand this gymnasium. Um, it's an, it's a nice existing space. It's a good asset. We think you should just preserve that asset, clean it up, new lighting, new MEPs, some, add some windows to the space, and then use it as a resource for a multi-function type space. So, um, and it also has a stage in there, which could be used for community theater-type events or speaking events, or, you know, you don't have town meetings, but those type of events.
Thank you.
Counselor Pendleton?
Thank you. Thank you for being here and all the hard work that you've put into this. I really appreciate it. And for the Public Building Commission, thank you. Um, however, um, I have to be quite honest, I'm sitting here cringing. I'm gonna be very honest, because what was charged for the Public Building Commission to do was to find a location for the Park and Rec Department and its offices. Not a community center. We have a community center, thank you. And the, it says the Park and Rec Department offices and the Park and Rec Commission recommendations were there. And the Park and Rec Department. So, this is beyond, this is, this is a, a project that's way beyond based off of what the Public Building Commission chose to do on their own. Never once asked for a community center. And how it's named here, Community Center at the Old Orchard Hill Elementary School, that's not what was asked for. That's why I wanted to see this original resolution. And no one was here except myself. And I remember setting this and looking at this. So, I appreciate your hard work. I'm not sure what the cost of your hard work was. Um, but I think it was a little far-reaching on the, um, Public Building Commission to go ahead and think that this council asked for a community center when we did not. So, my next question is, did the director of the Park and Recs Department create a checklist or a wish list for the Public Building Commission that is in this plan?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Pendleton. I'll turn those questions over to the vice chair.
Okay, so, um, the resolution was to work in conjunction and cooper- collaboratively with the Parks and Rec, um, Department. And in fact, the Parks and Rec Department gave us their programmatic needs. What do they need in a building? And this came directly from your Park and Rec Director, Molly Keys, as to what they need. So, what we did was look for a space that would meet the needs of what the Parks and Rec, um, cle- clearly and certainly, let me alleviate any thought that the Public Building Commission overstepped in any way. We didn't come up with anything. The public, the Parks and Rec Department, um, came up with it. I believe that the town manager was also, actually had at least looked at the list to make sure that the needs were being met and being specific. That was then, this list, we didn't say, "No, you can't have it," or, "Yes, you can have it." This was the needs that were brought to us. We certainly don't have the expertise to say, "You need this size of a basketball court" or "That size of a preschool classroom." They said what their needs were, how many classrooms they needed, uh, what their recreational space was, what their office space needs were. Um, that was done with the town manager. That was passed to us, in which we passed it to our architect, who did a walkthrough, who met with, um, the Park and Rec Department as well to get a better understanding. But they're the ones that provided the list. And that wa- is what I believe the resolution was, was to work with the Park and Rec Commission, and that's what we did.
Yes, the Park and Rec Commission and the Park and Rec Department.
Department is what I meant to say, Park and Rec.
Yes, the Park and Rec Department.
As a matter of fact, I believe the Park and Rec Commission, uh, representative was at two of our meetings, the chairman of the Park and Rec Commission. She was at two of our meetings as well.
Okay. So, with that said, in meeting the needs and the wish list of the Park and Rec Department and recommendations from the Park and Rec Commission, um, the, looking at like the concept one with the gym off grounds, the aquatic center off grounds, was a pool in that list from the Parks Department?
Yes, it was.
Or, or Rec Department, it was?
Yes, definitely, it definitely was.
So, that's, that's the location that is being suggested? If we don't just renovate the building, but to add on an aquatic center and a gym, like, concept number three I'm looking at, would be over. Have a whole gym built and have an aquatic center built. That would meet the needs and the requests of the Parks Department.
Correct.
And so, looking at the existing building and bringing it up to ADA compliant, and to continue to offer space, not as a community center, but a Parks Department, a Park and Rec Department, um, these rooms would meet the needs of the Rec Department?
Right. I think, um, Counselor Pendleton, I think that there just is a misstatement or misspeak. We are talking about a Parks and Recreation Department, which sometimes community center and Parks and Rec are interchangeable names. This is not a community center. The space that you see here that was, um, the, like, for instance, the, where you see, and I asked this question too, because it says like a dance room. We're not thinking of tap, jazz, ballet, you know, that we see at dance studios that are here in town. Dance, we mean, it, it's, it's used for yoga. It's used for chair aerobics or aerobic classes that are provided by the Parks and Rec Department. The preschool classes here, we, we say daycare, think preschool classes that are existing right now, um, that fill up in oh-point-two seconds if you're not on your computer at eight AM.
Right, right.
So, we currently have four, four empty classrooms. Um, it just gives additional space. And then also, um, the craft rooms and things like that, those are for, those are additional spaces that were, um, needs of the Park and Rec Department, not community center.
Okay. So, in looking at that, right, that's what I'm saying, we're not creating another community center.
No, we are, no, it, correct.
And it states community center here on the front of it. That's why I questioned it. I'm baffled, baffled.
So, we'll like reverse, rewind, it's Parks and Rec Department?
There you go. Okay, thank you. Now, um, the question that I have is, there is an existing field there now under concept number three? Or is that one to be built? There's two existing fields. Are any of these fields offered to be built? Under concept three proposed site plan?
So, in concept three, we're proposing to relocate one of the baseball fields. So, where we're showing the aquatic center and fieldhouse and playground, there currently is a truncated baseball field. It's a small baseball field. We're proposing to put it in the southeast corner of the site. You could see where the road bends around.
Yes.
In lieu of where it is, to allow the new, the proposed future, um, natatorium to be in that location. Um, concept two and concept one left that baseball field where it is and put the new building in the back corner. Both of which work. There's nothing wrong with each of the, nothing wrong with each of these schemes. Functionally, they meet all the functional requirements. However, concept three does provide, um, this sort of north-south connection across the site. And it allows the baseball field to be configured in such a way that, you know, the play, the field can be bigger, the play does not happen directly at the building. Um, it also provides a, um, an easier pad site to build, um, the proposed building, which would be at the street, um, and provide access to, uh, additional parking at the street side.
I'm sorry, what proposed building?
Uh, the proposed, um, natatorium and fieldhouse. The future phase of the, um, phase two and three.
Uh, you mean like the gym and the aquatic center?
Yes.
Those, okay, because you're calling it a fieldhouse, and I'm going, "What?"
Well, those are just.
Because I don't see that word there.
Yes, ma'am, those are just other names for, uh, that's fine. I apologize.
I'm thinking fieldhouse would be closer, you know, like sports would be closer to the baseball field, but, gotcha. So, is there a soccer field presently in existence there?
There are two soccer fields presently in existence, one of which is colored in this diagram, a lighter green. And then there's one to the left of it, which runs, um, east, mostly east-west to the left of that.
Right, okay.
Those would be uninterrupted.
Okay. So, in your proposed plan with the phasing in, the phase one would be to deal with the building itself and bring it up to code, take care of the roof, take care of the mechanic? take care of the roof, take care of the mechanical, make it ADA compliant, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, whatever else falls under Phase One for that building. And then, in doing the rooms, renovating the rooms, whatever the case may be. Then Phase Two and Phase Three are located where that field is now. I don't see a, you know, an optional proposed phasing, but I just take it that those two would be moved to the left? If, if we went with Concept Three?
That's correct.
That would be moved over there. So, Phase Two and Three, why could they not be, just a Phase Two, since they're both buildings that would be constructed? Why couldn't they not be constructed at the same time?
They could, they could. And this concept was constructed so that the community has the flexibility of doing it in three phases or two phases. Just because, to be very frank, Phase Two and Three and new, new pool and gym would be a pretty expensive undertaking. And it's, you know, based on my experience working with other communities on their recreation facilities, that, you know, sixty or eighty million dollars is a massive bite. And, you know, communities can't, usually can't afford to take that all on at once. I'm not necessarily speaking for South Windsor. It would be great if you could accomplish that, but we like to provide financially responsible options for accomplishing your long-term goals. And this just gives some flexibility of thought.
So, I guess I have another question. I don't see an option in here for the building to be renovated, updated, meeting the needs of the Rec Department with a pool excluding everything else, excluding the basketball court, excluding the fields, on and on and on. Because I know the pool, indoor pool, is a request of the citizens, but also the Parks Department. And to be able to, in what I'm looking at here, I don't know if the, this aquatic center would accommodate for our swim team to be able to have meets in there. So, that's what was one of the goals of creating and finding a place for our Parks Department, to include a pool and eliminate everything else. I don't see an option here for that.
So, that is correct. But what we envision is that if the community were to decide, and what I mean community, I mean the community as a whole acting through you as their agent, if the community decided, "We don't want a fieldhouse, we just want a pool," you would build just Phase Three, which would be just a, just a natatorium, aquatic center of some size and scale. And that aquatic center would be a standalone facility. Because of the way the site is configured, we don't necessarily professionally believe it makes good sense for that building to be physically attached to the existing building. We think it should be a standalone structure, either behind the site. So in this diagram, it could be located where the, the red box is, the Phase Three box is, directly adjacent to the parking and the drop-off. It could have its own entrance. It could be directly adjacent to the schools, so there would be walking distance to it. It would more than likely, based on the program, and I, and I do apologize, I did not bring the program with me this evening. I will have the building committee issue to you the, the full program analysis. But the, the program was to include, the original program looked for an aquatic center that had three pools in it. A fifty-meter competition pool with an independent diving well, a recreation pool and a therapy pool. That's a massive amount of financial undertaking. Our experience has been working with other communities. We've designed a very successful community natatorium in the town of Newtown, which has a competition pool, which would meet all the requirements of, for competitions, whether it be the high school and the education program. And then a recreation pool adjacent to it, which would have lots of different features. Exercise therapy area, swim lessons area, play area, zero threshold entry area. So the recreation pool could be really quite a dynamic space, but not the same as the competition pool. There's stark differences between all three types of pools. What level, what level or temperature the water needs to be kept at, what the maintenance requirements for those pools are. So, if the community decided that the proper investment long-term was just to build an aquatics facility, because we have lots of schools that have gymnasiums, but we don't have an aquatics facility, A, that would make a lot of sense for the community. And B, that would make sense for it to be a standalone facility directly adjacent to this. Also, for the record, I've worked for a lot of communities building their recreation centers. This location makes a lot of sense. It's adjacent to all the athletic facilities. It's adjacent to the schools. So after-school programs can be held here. Evening programs can be held here. It's just a good spot overall. So that's why we think a phased-in approach at this site makes the best sense for South Windsor's Parks and Rec Department long-term.
May I ask you, you said to take the gym and turn it into a pool, is that what you said? Did I hear that correctly? Or did I not hear that?
No, what I'm saying is, we envision a three-phase project.
Right, but could you do that? Could you take the old gym out the present school? And make it an aquatic area?
No.
And then, okay, thank you. I just want to clarify that.
I'm sorry, I missed, I probably misread your question.
I just want to clarify that. That's why I'm looking at the gym and it turns into an exercise room, so that's why I'm asking. The other concern that I have is to build an aquatic center there that would not meet the needs for the competition of the swim team. But since, or maybe, a, an aquatic center, knowing that it's a standalone building, why would we not locate that over at the community center presently now, which is across from the high school, where the swim team can walk over and do their thing?
That's certainly a possibility.
And the seniors and the whole community.
If the town acting through its building committee says, "Tom, we think it might be a good idea to build it over there, could you look at that?" We would be more than willing to look at that for you.
Okay, I see, I see. Make it more accommodating for the students to walk there. And the seniors to use it, and the community to use it at our community center. That's, I'm just asking. So then that would just give us the renovation of the Old Orchard Hill, and then to have an indoor pool at the community center. I think that's what I was looking for, to find a location for the Park and Rec Department. If it was to be in Nevers Road, then the aquatic center would be in the middle of the community center and the Park and Rec Department. But because we have the present building that can be renovated to meet the needs of the Parks Department, why not? If that's going to be more affordable, perfect. If we have to, you know, reconsider and maybe move the aquatic center over there instead, near the community center.
I think the strength of this exercise is that, as a town, we're now, we, you are now talking about it and thinking about it. And if it generates questions like yours that create new directive, then fantastic. The exercise has been a success. So, that's certainly something the building committee could explore at your directive. And I look forward to any, you know.
Yeah, this is our first presentation, so you're going to have a lot of questions going forward. And other suggestions or other ideas, and then we'll be able to hear from the public also and maybe bring some things back. But I know certainly tonight, we're not going to be making any decisions on anything. This is our first approach at this, our first. So appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have just a comment on the, the new vestibule area, beautiful design. I imagine the, the windows, all, all the windows in there is probably pretty pricey. So it would be good to kind of see an alternate of just a regular, some sort of regular wall, brick, what have you. It is gorgeous, but that's one comment I wanted to throw out there. And then I would like to know, the next time we hear about this, which way you folks and the PBC are leaning towards? I don't know if you have the answer now, as far as which proposal you think works best, fiscally makes the most sense. I personally like the third one. I think it definitely looks nicer. And then Counselor Pendleton, I don't know what size pool you think they can fit at the community center, but that's going to be. Yeah, like a kiddie pool, I think, over there. But, yeah, the window thing, again, I think it's beautiful. I don't know if the new windows are necessary for the reconstruction. That's all questions that I'm sure you can answer down the road. But I just wanted to throw that out there, where it does look nice, but money is definitely a factor here.
Counselor Carey?
Again, thank you so much. I found your experience with other communities really interesting, and what you said about Newington. So with the aquatic center, are, are most towns today building both, like, the competition pool, lap pool and recreation pools, or?
I couldn't say that. I can tell you that some, a lot of communities have done that. But every town, it's a different, it's a different solution if they are actually building pools. Pools are a big commitment. Pools are not a moneymaker. They're a financial investment on an annual basis. And every town has different desires, different demands. So, some communities are trying to build more flexible pools. Pool, let's say a six-lane pool that has just, you know, equal depth throughout it. They run it at a warmer temperature. It can be used for activities. It can be used for swim lessons. It could be used for competition, but it's not perfect for any of those three things. So building two pools provides a significant amount of flexibility. Maybe not the most flexibility, but it allows one pool to do all the recreation components and be warmer. And it allows one pool to do the competition requirements. And currently in the program that's been final, you know, finalized, I say finalized, but the program that's been, being used as a baseline for the recreation center includes a competition pool and a recreation pool.
And you also mentioned a diving well. Are they, you know, normally built into these pools?
What we normally see in, let's say, a classic high school pool is that one end of the pool is deeper and diving boards can be used on that end of the pool. A traditional diving well, watch the Olympics in the coming weeks, you'll see what a diving well actually is. It's actually a dedicated pool for diving and it has different height boards. That's a fantastic goal and wish list item. I advised the building committee that I, I didn't think it made sense for the town of South Windsor. And, you know, the building committee and Ms. Keys were very, very receptive to that, and they understood. And so we revised the program to remove that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counselor Pendleton?
Just one last question. Do we have, are you going to go back and create numbers to present to us on various phases, various changes, various things like that? I don't know what the Public Building Commission plan would be. Or are you prepared to create numbers for that? I don't know. I mean, just to give us an idea where we're heading, what we're doing?
Yes. Good evening. Chuck Warrington-McCaughers, where the owners rep for the town with all the schools and on this project. Yeah, so those are the next steps. Tonight is really here to, to really ascertain, are we going in the right direction? Because obviously, we did the previous study, colleagues were involved with those, the ones that Kathy spoke about with finding the new sites. Coming to this one is, again, that fiscally responsible solution for Parks and Rec. The key thing tonight is, are we going in the right direction? Are we, are we warm, are we, is, for the town council? It sounds like I think we are with, with some of the improvements to Orchard Hill. And there's a lot of different layers to this with, we talked about the ADA, the code, talked about the roof, maybe some mechanicals. The next steps after this, if the town, if the indication is, "Yeah, you're going in the right direction, keep going", there's going to be, you're going to see a bunch more options before we're done with this at the end of the day. We just did three tonight. We could probably done ten of them, you know? But for the sake of moving forward and not getting too far ahead of ourselves, we wanted to come to you and kind of take a break. Are we going in the right direction? So yes, those next steps now, assuming, in, in any of these phases, when we price them, we're going to, we're going to budget and develop those order magnitudes by phase. Whether the building is in one location or not, it's really not going to make much of a difference in, in how we develop it. What the key thing is, we're going to do, and we've done them with the school projects, is, if we break up the phases, the key thing that we all saw during COVID and after that is escalation. What's it going to cost to wait two, three years to build Phase Two or Three, whether it's the pool, whether it's the gym? We're going to have all the pricing there, and alls we're going to do is change the years in the escalation. And we're going to have them all detailed and broke them out. You're probably going to have probably ten, fifteen different 1A, 1B, 1C, 2A, 2B, 2C. I'm just using, it's easy to, once we have the base numbers in twenty, twenty-four dollars or twenty, twenty-five dollars, it's easy to now tell you what's it going to cost to move that work out. And we can see what that is in real dollars over the course of time. The one thing that I would certainly recommend, at least even for the existing building, is have it all designed as once. If you decide to go forward with a project, and we advertise those services for architectural services, have them design the entire renovation and then break it up, like Tom said, break it up in parts. Because now, if you go to develop the rest of it, it looks holistic. It looks like it was designed at once. Instead of, how many times we seen houses, or we add on, we do the master bed in the garage, we want to make it blend. Do it all at once. That money, that's cheap money compared to the overall. But to have a holistic solution for just that building alone. And then if you want to do the whole, the site, you can do that as well, or you could that, do that down the road. But I'd certainly encourage that as well. But yes, we are going to come back with options. We're going to develop the pricing with Tom and his team. That's total project budgets, just like we did with the previous referendums for the schools. It's going to have hard costs, your construction costs, all your fees and expenses, design fees, inspection fees, escalation. We'll anticipate some borrowing costs, financing costs. They'll have the whole, the whole enchilada in there to, to give you what those costs are, and we'll give you a summary of those. So yes, that'll be in some of the next steps. And then from there, as options modify, they're easy to manipulate, to move the parts and pieces, and then take just the building. Now let's break it into the ADA, break it into the roof, maybe the building envelope, and a wish list that we can break down, alternatives. So, once we have the pricing, it won't be hard to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Maniscalco, this would then have to go before referendum? And then, Mr. Maniscalco, is there a way that the special revenue fund for the Park Department or the Rec Department would be able to pay for or help pay for any of the interest or bonding or anything? Could some of that money go towards paying for this?
So, if we were prior to 2019, I would say potentially. But through the pandemic, when we had to close down a large portion of our park and recreation programs, the special revenue fund took a pretty significant hit. So as a result, there's not as much money in there as there used to be. While it's solvent and it's working forward in the way it is, there's not a lot in there at this time. So, I mean, that would be like a drop in the bucket compared to the, the numbers that they're being proposed.
Well, of course, but I'm, I'm referring to the pool. If there, as we do with VMP for a family pass, if there was a pass to the pool for public swim.
Are you meaning operations-wise?
Yeah.
Yeah, from an, from an operations standpoint, yes. That can all work in that, in that regard, the same as VMP does.
So that way, if you want to utilize a pool and you want to go, you get a pass, you do what you need to do. And even the seniors would pay to do their programming or whatever the case may be. The swim team maybe, I don't know, work something out to, for the building, the use of the building.
Yeah, from an operations standpoint, we could use the special revenue fund to help with that and probably charge some type of a fee for people to use the pool. That said, I don't think we could use the special revenue fund to pay for renovations. That said, I don't think we could use the special revenue fund to pay for renovations.
Not, not the renovations, I'm just talking for operations. All right, thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When you come back with prices, could you include the cost of a scale model?
Oh, to build an actual scale so you see it physically?
Scale model would be wonderful for fundraising.
I'm sure Tom's team can put together a nice one.
And you could even throw it in there as part of the, right? So, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I'd like to thank Vice Chair Doherty. Do you have any more to say, or are you all set? Okay, well, thank you, Vice Chair Doherty and Mr. Akari and Mr. Warrington. You're free to go. Thank you. Moving on to thirteen B, Deputy Mayor, Syracuse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, resolution setting a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on a proposed child care tax abatement. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby sets Tuesday, September third, twenty twenty-four at eight PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall, fifteen forty Sullivan Avenue, South Windsor, Connecticut, as the time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on a proposed child care tax abatement and as more fully described in Exhibit A.
You got three of them, okay. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Counselor Carey?
So, um, just for us to think about, you know, I think this is a good idea to, you know, do this payment. But, you know, I just went to that fi- fire department's presentation and the volunteer firemen do get a small, very small abatement. But to get it, they have to put in like a hundred hours of training and volunteer work, right? And it, so when I look at this, I just thought, you know, they do a lot for a little. Um, and so do we, as we do this, wanna make this like equitable so that, you, you know, maybe we put a maximum on it? Because when I think about, you know, and it's not that I don't think the daycare is really, really important, but when I listen to what the firemen do for, what is it, a thousand dollars a year? Um, I just thought maybe we need to think about how do we make it equitable? So I, I'm putting it out there for your thoughts, you know, I'm not trying to, I would like to put a maximum on it. Um, and that was why, what made me think that.
Um, what were you thinking? Are you looking to change one of the resolution, or the resolution here or something?
Well, I, what I was thinking was that, um, we could just put, you know, up to a maximum of. And, you know, I, I mentioned the firemen because they, you know, they put in a hundred hours and they get a thousand dollars. So that was the reason.
But you gotta put it somewhere, where are you looking to?
Oh. Are you, did you?
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna end the conversation.
Oh, okay, thank you. Are you looking to change it somewhere, make it, put it, put a percentage or a dollar amount? Are you looking to put that somewhere in the resolution?
Yes, yes, I would put it at the end up to, you know, I would put in up to a maximum of. And I, again, I'm not trying to dictate a number, I, I'm telling you where.
Well, you gotta have a number, you could maximum, oh, you gotta have a number.
I understand that, but I wanted this for discussion of all of you. So I was putting out a thousand just because I thought of the volunteer firemen.
And then it looks like we have to do something with the daycare property tax abatement grand list. This, I think this is the, the form that the daycare fills out?
Yes.
What you have before you is the original resolution, which incorporates the assessors' comments, my comments. It addresses some of the concerns that you raised at the last meeting about the definitions of the different types of childcare providers that are, uh, able to be subject to this abatement. And you, you know, you can, you can draft it however you want. Uh, the statute allows for a one-hundred percent abatement of property that is used for the provision of childcare services for a maximum of up to five years. How you do that is entirely up to you. What we've drafted here is based on your comments before and based on some other towns in the, in the area that have adopted this, um, of a fifty percent abatement of the property that is used for the provision of childcare services for a maximum of five years. That's what's before you. I know there was some discussion about just having this available to those daycare facilities that are in residential homes. Uh, if that's the intention, then you might wanna remove the language regarding.
That's highlighted in blue, right?
Childcare centers, because that speaks to facilities that operate outside the home, that have more than twelve students, uh, children. So, but again, that's up to you. My, my only advice to you is to come up with your final version of this before having your public hearing, right? Decide what you wanna put forth, let's finalize it and then get it available before the September third public hearing.
Yeah, 'cause I think.
And I think you might know this as well, but this is not an ordinance, this is just by resolution. You do not have to have a public hearing for this. If you want to, certainly your prerogative, but it's not necessary or required.
Okay. So for, if, I know as, at the last meeting, we agreed in regards to a childcare center. I don't, I think everybody was looking at home daycare. So I think if we wanted to strike that from the resolution.
Through, through you, Madam Mayor, if I could?
Sure.
I, I believe also, um, we'd strike the next paragraph where it says group childcare home. Um, I think the intention is, uh, simply the, the folks that are providing childcare outside of their home that they live in, uh, with the maximum of six children allowed. So, and it sounds like Counselor Carey, I, I don't know, that number, you're hoping to put a cap of a thousand dollars on the abatement? Is that correct?
That's where I got that from, you know, at the fire department. But again, it, not from them, but I mean, based on what we give the firemen.
I think that's a, it's hard to argue, um, after hearing that from you. Um, it's a very commendable thought and, I don't know, I guess per Attorney Corella, I think we should probably come up with some sort of consensus and finalize this here tonight. In that way, we can come back and, you know, have a finalized resolution. Um, he provided us with everything that was requested, all the definitions and everything that we've been discussing for a couple of meetings that we've had this. So, um, I appreciate that. Um, but I would like to, uh, make sure that we are covering ourselves to where it only includes those home daycare facilities, the ones where are, they are only limited to six kids. I don't know if we also need to add a line in there to say, um, if anybody, uh, has more than six children enrolled, they are, um, they aren't allowed to have this, uh, abatement?
I think seventy-seven A three takes care of that.
Yeah.
Excuse me, can I make a point of order, please? We're in the resolution to set a public hearing for the ta- we're not in a discussion item at this time. The resolution that we're in is to set a hearing for citizen input. It's not a discussion item, so I would like to, um, make a motion to remove this public hearing from our agenda and in its place, put the discussion item about the resolution. So we can clear it up this evening and move forward with the resolution at our next meeting. Because you have to decide, as the town attorney said, we don't need a public hearing on a resolution. So we can just eliminate the public hearing and we can replace it with a discussion item on fixing the resolution here this evening. Um, and if, I will abstain if the fire department conversation comes up, just to let you know. So that's my point of order.
Anything wrong with us discussing this during this resolution discussion? Is, it seems directly related.
I, I don't think it's inappropriate to go through the resolution as you were doing if your intention is to get it to a town, uh, to a public hearing. Because my point to you was, I think you need to clean this up in order to get it to a public hearing.
But right now, we're in the resolution to set the public hearing, so that's why I'm saying to eliminate that.
I, I don't think it's out of order to do exactly what you're doing, which is going through the resolution, deciding what you're gonna put forward to the public hearing. That's, I think, and I think that's germane to that point, to that.
But you also said we don't need a public hearing, so.
I, I requested have a public hearing because if we're giving tax breaks or an abatement, I think it gives a chance of residents in town who don't agree.
Right, I understand.
I'd rather do it that way.
Okay. And then also, in the past, we've discussed being able to change the resolution the night of the public hearing, correct?
The idea of a public hearing is to receive citizen input. And if there's something that comes before you and you feel that it's appropriate to amend your resolution, you can always do that.
Okay, all right. But it's good to go in there with a, a concise, agree upon resolution. So that's up to you to continue with the public hearing, setting the time and place.
Yeah, I'd rather do that, 'cause if we're gonna, and I know it's not an ordinance, but.
Should we add a, a discussion item or just continue under this as a discussion right now with the resolution?
It's, it's up to the mayor, but I think it's appropriate to continue your.
It's because it's germane to the.
It's germane to the issue of what's getting in front of the public for the public hearing. If that's your intention, then.
Thank you, I just wanted to be clear, thank you.
No problem, thank you. Um, so if we wanna remove the highlighted area, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And then the next one is two, seventy-seven A two, I think?
Yes, so just keep the whereas that has seven A three and remove seven A one, seven A two. Um, and then I, I'm not opposed to Counselor Carey's idea, um, based off of what she shared. I.
Where would we put that in the resolution? Because I, it's on the application regarding, um, how much?
Seems to me that that would go under the, on the second page, be it further resolved, that the abatement is not transferable to subsequent property owners and starting on the grand list year following initial application will be limited to five years. I would say maybe insert there not to exceed a dollar amount. And then, or the maximum, or, or the maximum duration, a lot of less. Somewhere in that paragraph, I would put the, the, the financial cap. I'd suggest that maybe at the end. To first, and not to exceed.
Whatever dollar.
Whatever, whatever you all agree on, I heard a thousand dollars at some point, but that's up to you guys.
And I think that we were thinking of a different number of years as well.
Yeah, I, again, I think, um, I know what we've done in the past, serving, uh, alongside Counselor Pendleton, um, with resolutions like this, we, uh, we did try to come up with a number that the majority of folks agreed with. I, sounds like we're trying to get a consensus with a thousand dollar limit per year. Um, so let Madam Mayor get that consensus going. And then I definitely think, um, if somebody else has a, another number in mind, um, we should probably base it off of five, 'cause that's the maximum, and then whatever other number somebody wants to come forward with. I think those are really the only two things that we need a consensus on. And then it should be pretty clear for the attorney to go to work and clean this thing up.
We have a consensus of a thousand, or did we, anybody have another number?
Do we know what the actual, what the abatement is for the volunteers?
My understanding is they get it, it's either a thousand or two thousand.
Depending on the years of service.
Depending on the years of service that they receive.
And we don't have to do it for five years. I'm looking for a consensus, so, I mean, a thousand for.
Thousand for years?
Thousand for three years?
Yeah, no, fine, okay. You know, and, and I mean, I, I could.
Because we don't have to do this.
No, or we could do a thousand for five years, you, you wanna limit it to three? Okay.
I just have a question. Counselor Chair? Sorry. That's okay.
If we're gonna go with a dollar amount, um, maybe this is a question for the attorney, but do we even need the language in the now therefore be it resolved, um, to abate fifty percent of the real property taxes? Do we even need the percentage language in there if we're gonna give it a fixed dollar amount? Because I can't imagine that, maybe I'm wrong, but I can't imagine that there's property in the, that, that someone's gonna have a house in this town that's, you know, fifty percent is gonna be.
Yeah, 'cause we.
That a thousand is gonna be more than what they would be getting.
Think the thousand is a maximum.
On the application.
Right.
Not a flat number, it'd be the maximum, but I think ultimately, like, to your point, it'd be the same thing, essentially.
Yeah, I would think that if you went fifty, fif- there's no one who's gonna have fifty percent, that's not gonna be at least a thousand dollars. It's gonna be more than that. So why do we even need the fifty percent? Why can't we just say a thousand?
Well, not necessarily, though, because what this says and what it was intended to do is it excludes the land. And it says fifty percent of the real property taxes due for that portion of real estate used in the operation of a licensed childcare center. So if you had a, like, small house and you use one room, so you use ten percent of your house, you could be under the thousand.
But does that also then create, I mean, that creates more work for the daycare home and it creates, I would assume, more work for the tax assessor's office to go in and confirm, yes, you know, okay, this is, they're only using ten percent of this home, so, you know, they're.
Well, that's why I think we're going for the thousand dollars, it's just a flat.
Right.
You write off one thousand dollars and.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, should we just get rid of the language about fifty percent, not to exceed?
You're talking about in that big paragraph in the back?
Correct, yeah.
Attorney Corella?
Do we need to have a percentage in there, or can we just say a thousand dollars?
I think she's talking about that big paragraph in the back.
The now therefore be it resolved paragraph on the top of page two.
I mean, I don't see that as a problem, that, you know, just eliminating the fifty percent since you have a cap on it. The idea that, you know, this obviously follows the statute that talks about the ability of the town to abate up to one hundred percent. And so the discussion from prior meetings was, we're not gonna do one hundred percent, we're gonna do something less than that, we're gonna do fifty percent. So that's the way this was drafted. The concept of a cap was brought up tonight. I think it makes sense that we don't necessarily need to have a percentage. Um, as far as the, kind of the work associated with that, this is, you know, you also asked for the assessor and I to come up with kind of a form, which I also gave you. And this would be the application form. This requires the provider to give the assessor not only this application form, but a copy of last year's tax return that would show the percentage of the house that's being used. So the information's there, it's up to you guys how you wanna structure the abatement. But I don't have a problem conceptually with removing the percentage.
Thank you. Captain Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I guess I, I wanna, I thought, um, Counselor Carey was saying a limit of a thousand, not like a cap, not a flat rate of a thousand. Um, is that correct? Yeah, um, and then just, just some housekeeping, too. On the application, um, it says that the childcare center may be removed. Um, we'll also need that middle one removed, group childcare home.
Right.
Um, just to match the.
Sounds like this is only going to apply to family childcare homes.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, fine.
Yes, um, and then I, I don't know if, I, I believe every, all nine of the current folks that are running these, um, daycares out of their home have been operational for at least a year. But I think any sort of protection that we can put in there, um, I don't, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how much it costs to file, to have one of these daycare centers, um, you know, get one kid in there, get a thousand dollars off your taxes. Um, you know, maybe putting a requirement in there, um, to have them have to be operational for at least a year, prior to being able to apply.
Yeah, we did mention that.
Yeah. Yeah, I know that was brought up in the last meeting. Um, just to make sure, you know, we're giving this abatement to folks that are really serious about what they do. Um, you know, they may start it up and not really like it and not do it anymore. Um, these are, these are people that wanna do it. These are, these are people that want to do it long-term, have been doing it long-term, are just simply asking for a little bit of help because, to the point in that email that you read into the record, they don't charge what the folks charge at these daycare centers. It's getting outrageous, to be honest with you. So, you know, it's, it's a good thing, trying to help some people out, but I don't know if everybody's okay with also putting a line in there or adding it somewhere in one of these lines to have it be a requirement. Is it, also if that's allowed, I don't know if we can.
I would avoid that. Just looking at the statute, it talks about providing an abatement for licensed facilities. If they have their license, then I think that's the, that's the test. Now, it's up to you financially, three years, five years, put a thousand dollar cap on it, make it fifty percent, make it a hundred percent, right? All that's up to you. But I think when it comes to who's eligible, I think you got to follow the statute and it's either, it's whoever's licensed. And so I think just leave it at that.
Fair enough. Yeah. Okay.
Counselor Balboni?
Just to clear up, that now therefore be it resolved paragraph, you'd also need to remove childcare center, group childcare home or, and then also section nineteen A dash eighty or.
Yeah, we'll clean up that whole thing just to reference the family childcare home.
And then the next one, the five years, turn that into three. Okay. Counselor Pendleton?
On the form that is presented, daycare property tax abatement, it doesn't state anywhere here for, I mean, the percentage of property used by, for daycare, that's irrelevant. It says your federal income tax return is, can we ask for their daycare licensing for the state of Connecticut number on this form somewhere so it can be confirmed that they are still present in active daycare?
Yes.
And a thousand dollar abatement, I'm just asking the question, a thousand dollar abatement off of the taxes that are determined by their assessed value and what our mill rate is, it would be a tax abatement of a thousand dollars for five years? Is that what we're planning here? Three years? I'm sorry, three years? Okay. And that they would have to prove their childcare center, their in-home daycare center, childcare center is still in existence on a yearly basis?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on?
Just, just to go back to it, I, I like the idea of the.
Counselor Boganski?
Sorry. Pulled a Carolyn. I like the idea of leaving the percentage in just up to, and then up to a maximum of, I just think it clarifies that, you know, just doesn't add that much verbiage to the, but pretty much clarifies what we're looking to do. Just.
We have a consensus?
Are you referring to children or are you referring to the property?
No, fifty percent of the children. Yeah, the property. No, where it says abate fifty percent of the real property taxes.
No, that's.
Yeah. Up, up to, no, we're going to, we're going to leave that, we're going to say that up to a maximum of a thousand dollars.
I was asking a question. Does it?
Yeah. No, no, no. No, I'm done.
He's done. Go ahead, Counselor Pendleton.
To abate fifty percent of real property taxes? So I thought we were going to remove that and just put the thousand dollars in there.
No, no.
I mean, if you look at the real property taxes, somebody's property could be seven thousand dollars, you're going to abate?
No, no. Then there's going to be a line that says up to a maximum of a thousand dollars. It's not a flat a thousand, it's a limit of a thousand.
But it says here.
That's just the statute verbiage. But we're setting a limit of a thousand.
Then why is that still in there, fifty percent of real property taxes?
I think what Counselor Boganski is saying to leave it, because it matches what the statute says, but we're, as a town, putting a limit up to a thousand for their abatement.
Okay, then it should be changed to replace to abate fifty percent. We're not abating fifty percent, we're just offering a thousand dollar abatement.
I think we're going around the circle.
So that's what I'm saying. I, I don't understand. Someone help me.
It's going to be fifty percent of the property taxes not to exceed a thousand dollar abatement, not to exceed. So the credit, the abatement, will not be more than a thousand.
Do you think somebody's taxes in this town are two thousand dollars? No. Okay, go ahead.
It's fifty percent of the property that's used for the provision of the childcare facility. If they have a ten thousand dollar tax bill and they use thirty percent of their property, right, for childcare, home, family home childcare, that's three thousand dollars, fifty percent of it is fifteen hundred dollars. But you're going to say, okay, it's going to be capped at a thousand.
Okay, forgive me because I think, I was thinking the whole tax bill. I wasn't thinking just the portion of the structure.
Right.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Or, or conversely, if we, if we shrunk that percentage down and fifteen hundred was their taxes, you take half of that, now you're at seven fifty, right? So you, I just wanted the percentage up to a maximum, see?
Now I get it.
I knew you'd get there.
Yeah, we'll get you there. Just, just explain it. Yeah, okay. Okay, so the percentage of the property should stay in there then? And the way that you explained it to me was perfect. Thank you.
All right. We had a motion, we had a second, we had a lengthy discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving on to thirteen C. Counselor Pendleton?
Thirteen C, resolution referring the proposal to build a forty by eighty foot pavilion and bring utilities to the Barton property Mitchell fairgrounds to the South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to section eight twenty-four of, eight dash twenty-four of the Connecticut general statutes. Whereas the town purchased a sixty-seven acre property consisting largely of an old pine plantation in nineteen ninety-seven with open space bond monies. And whereas the town approved the properties with funds from the planning and zoning fee in lieu of open space clearing the pines that were creating a fire hazard in developing the fairgrounds known as the John J. Mitchell fairgrounds with frontage and access on both Brookfield Street and Troy Road. And whereas the town's proposed uses of this property include debris storage in the event of another significant storm, large events, recreational activities, both passive and active, and/or the farmer's market, and whereas the Park and Recreation Department is proposing the addition of a pavilion and extending water, sewer, and electricity to the property, which enhance the property to accommodate all types of events, and whereas the Park and Recreation Department has funds allocated from ARPACIP and donations to complete this project. And whereas any plan to expand, expend funds to develop town-owned open space properties must first be submitted to the South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission for a report pursuant to section eight dash twenty-four of the Connecticut general statutes. Now therefore be it resolved that the prop, proposal to create a multipurpose site almah John J. Mitchell fairgrounds be submitted to the South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission for a request pursuant to section eight dash twenty-four of the Connecticut general statutes. And Mr. Maniscalco, may I?
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
Yes. May I? So it says pavilion extending water, sewer, and electricity to the property. Adding sewers to that would mean that there would be restrooms in this pavilion and not just an open picnic pavilion, yes?
No, this is, this is an open picnic pavilion. There's not going to be any restrooms associated with this. There are future plans for the fairgrounds to also do some type of restroom facility, potentially a kitchen facility and other facilities there to better accommodate different events. But at this point, what we're looking at is only an open pavilion.
Just an open pavilion?
Yep. We wanted to get the utilities into the site so that way there was water there to help clean the pavilion in the event that it's messy after an event or something.
Think of a bigger version of what's at the farmer's market, that little one.
Right, right. And I see, and it's a separate piece, is the extending the water, sewer, and electricity to the property. I see that's a separate piece. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to thirteen D. Counselor Balboni?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thirteen D, resolution adopting the Capital Region Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan update twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine. Whereas the town of South Windsor historically experienced severe damage from natural hazards and it continues to be vulnerable to the effects of those natural hazards profiled in the plan, e.g., flooding, extreme heat, droughts, severe storms such as thunderstorms and winter storms, dam failures, wildfires and earthquakes resulting in loss of property and life, economic hardship, and threats to public health and safety. And whereas the South Windsor Town Council approved the previous version of the plan in twenty fourteen and twenty nineteen. And whereas the Capital Region Council of Governments, of whom the town of South Windsor is a member, has determined that climate change is affecting the frequency and severity of some hazards and therefore elected to expand the Hazard Mitigation Plan update to become a Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adapt, Adaptation Plan update. And whereas committee meetings were held and public input was sought in twenty twenty-three regarding the development and review of the Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaptation Plan update. And whereas the plan specifically addresses hazard mitigation and climate adaptation strategies and plan maintenance procedures for the town of South Windsor. And whereas the plan recommends several hazard mitigation actions that will provide mitigation for specific natural hazards that impact the town of South Windsor with the effect of protecting people and property from loss associated with those hazards while adapting to the effects of climate change. And whereas the Capital Region Council of Governments has developed and received conditional approval from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, also known as FEMA, for its Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaptation Plan update under the requirements of forty-four CFR two oh one point six. And whereas adoption of this plan will make the town of South Windsor eligible for funding to alleviate the impacts of future hazards, now therefore be it. Now therefore be it resolved by the town of South Windsor, by South Windsor Town Council that, number one, the plan is hereby adopted as an official plan of the town of South Windsor. Number two, the respective officials identified in the mitigation strategy of the plan are hereby directed to pursue implementation of the recommended actions assigned to them. Number three, future revisions and plan maintenance required by forty-four CFR two hundred and one point six. And FEMA are hereby adopted as a part of this resolution for a period of five years from the date of this resolution. Number four, an annual report on the progress of the implementation elements of the plan shall be presented to the town council.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? So just confirming, Mr. Maniscalco, this is not going to happen again until twenty twenty-nine?
That is correct.
Okay. So nobody has to read, wait, five more years before somebody has to read that one?
Yes. Counselor Balboni's voice will come back by that.
Okay, seeing no discuss, further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Moving on to thirteen E. Deputy Mayor, Syracuse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution appointing John Colwell as a resident member to the Town Council Subcommittee Open Space Task Force. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints John Colwell as a resident member to the Town Council Subcommittee Open Space Task Force.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Counselor Pendleton?
Yes. At our last meeting, we had this given to us, the town of South Windsor Boarding Commission overview, and I recall seeing that it was twelve members, and now that's missing. And was that changed on seven eleven by anyone? Because the composition said twelve members and when I counted, and that's why.
Right, and we. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Kathy and I were looking at that and there was nothing anywhere saying that it was twelve members.
The last one we got at the last meeting.
Right, right.
Said twelve members.
And we took that out because we went through all the ordinances and there's nothing in here that said there was going to be a composition of only twelve. That's why I attached all the ordinance, the original ordinance.
Do we have the one from the last meeting? Because this was changed apparently. And what I'm saying, the composition was created by stating that it was twelve members with adding it up with everybody that's on there would equal the twelve members. So removing that twelve members.
I think that when they removed, they removed the twelve members because it said at least two residents. So you can have six, seven, eight residents. So you would go over the twelve because that was taken off. I spoke to Chair Botteran and they took, there's no twelve.
Well, they don't, but that wasn't created by them, that was created by a council, according to ordinances. So that's why, do you have the one from the last meeting, Kathy? That'd be great if you could get it because I know it said twelve members.
Right.
So that's the part that's confusing to me is because we have an ordinance that created the Open Space Task Force and the ordinance and the membership of the Open Space Task Force was based off of that ordinance by adding up all the members, the body and the members. So to just erroneously remove the twelve and change it without coming before the count because it was created by ordinance.
But even the ordinance back, ordinance number one six two, it, because it amended one three six, and it, there's nothing that says twelve members. Because it's, that's why it says at least two members of the public. So if you had four members of the public, you're, you're going to have more than twelve members.
Could you get us a copy of that, Kath? Only for the fact that it has a date at the bottom of it. I know it does.
I think the reason why it had.
Can you put your microphone up?
The reason why it had twelve members, I think somebody simply added up who was supposed to be on there. When they did the Boarding Commission overview, they just put twelve there even though it wasn't on the ordinances. So you have all of the ordinances from the very first one all the way up to the revised and none of them have that on there. So we corrected the Boarding Commission overview to reflect the ordinance.
I'm, I'm following you.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Counselor Lewis?
I believe Counselor Pendleton, what the mayor is saying is the number twelve in the last meeting was incorrect. It didn't need to be there. So.
Because that's why I.
Hey, I, I got, I got what she's saying. Thank you for your help. I understand. But that's what I'm trying to find, and with our town attorney's help, I'm trying to find the membership by ordinance, the membership spelled out, you know, I, I don't know who created this, okay? This is not the ordinance. That's, this is not the ordinance. So going by the ordinance, because that's always been my question, is there room on there for another member? And I just want to make sure that we're doing this correctly based off of the ordinance and the actual membership. And so I'm trying to find here.
Yeah, going through all the, what's in, from the.
Oh, here we go. It's on the second page of one thirty-six. Composed of a member from Park and Rec, that's one, Planning and Zoning is two, Inland Wetlands is three, Agricultural is four. Agricultural, okay, and at least two members of the public, one, two. And then the Director of Public Works, Superintendent of Parks, Director of Planning, Member of the South Windsor Land Trust, Member of the South Windsor Chamber.
But that, then that ordinance goes away with number two two nine.
That's eleven.
Because they.
In two three nine.
Two two nine.
Two two nine.
Because they removed, they removed the Chamber of Commerce member.
Where's the memberships? Oh, here we go. Where is the memberships, oh, here we go, task force, composed of a member from the Park and Rec, Planning and Zoning, Inland Wetlands, Agricultural, and two members of the public, Park and Rec, Planning Department, Land Trust, and other members that the council may appoint, duties are signed, okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So there, and presently, there's how many folks? 13? 12? How many members on it now? No, I'm just saying, how many are appointed right now in there? How many are appointed on there right now? Four residents, I think there's four residents?
I think when we looked at the list of all the, um, Planning and Zoning and all that, I think there were 11.
Okay, okay. So with the wording, at least two members of the public, town attorney, that means we can have more members of the public added on, correct? Because it says at least two.
You have to have at least two.
And you can add more?
You can have three, you can have four.
Okay, thank you, that's what I'm trying to get at, it's just clearing up the confusion of the 12, wherever that never came in from, and looking at the current ordinance, gotcha.
That's why I pulled, I pulled it all together for you last week.
I got you, so now people, when they look at this, they'll know it's under ordinance number 229, and it's spelled out, okay, just, so people don't freak out, so you're putting on more members than are allowed, and, you know, I just want to clear that up.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Roll call, please. Counselor Boganski? Counselor Lewis? Counselor Balboni? Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Mayor Delnecky?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Syracuse?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald? Counselor Pendleton? Did you say abstain? Seven, uh, yeses, one abstention. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item 14, passage of ordinance, having none. Item 15, public input for any matter. Public input for any matter over which the council has jurisdiction shall not exceed 30 minutes. When recognized by the mayor, the speaker shall approach the lectern, give their name and address. Speakers shall avoid personal attacks or impugning or alleging an improper motive to any person. The speakers may address the council on any item over which the council has jurisdiction. The speaker shall limit speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward? Okay, going once, going twice, seeing none. Moving on to item 16, communications from the council. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say, in light of what happened this week to, uh, former President Trump, uh, I just think it's really important, uh, to come together as a community, as a country, state, whomever, in unity and love, um, you know, I just pray that hurting people around the world that have such hate for others will be touched by God, um, and find that love that they're seeking. And I think it's also important for us as leaders to make it clear to the public, you know, the ladies and, you know, Steve who sits to my right, I have nothing but love for these folks. It's been a pleasure and an honor serving with Counselor Fitzgerald thus far. Counselor Pendleton and I may duke it out in between the lines here, but if you show up anywhere from an hour to 30 minutes before a meeting, you'll see the two of us speaking cordially. If there was anything wrong with her, I'd be the first person there. Actually, her husband, I know, would run through a brick wall to get there first. But I just think it's very important for the tone in which we speak, uh, in which the media speaks, and us as leaders, to make it clear to the folks that we don't hate each other. You know, we are supposed to disagree when we want to disagree, we're supposed to agree when we want to agree, and that's how work gets done. It's horrible, it's terrible that folks wish harm upon others. And, uh, yeah, I just want to put it out there that, um, my prayer for this town, nation, and state is that whoever's hurting out there and wants to inflict harm on others will find that love from somebody or something that will change that tone in their life and whatever's going on in their head, so thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anyone else, communications? Counselor Pendleton? I have to think of your name sometimes.
I'd just like to follow that up with, um, for a request that we all pray for our country, but also pray for the fallen of, and the injured of the event that took place. And being a retired firefighter, I had to speak on that behalf of that family and the bravery of that husband and dad. And, uh, just please pray for them and to get through this difficult time.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further, moving on to item 17, executive session, Deputy Mayor Syracuse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we go into executive session to discuss item A, discuss a tax fixing agreement with Rycon Properties LLC, commercial storefront 470 Governor's Highway, and I'd like to invite the town manager, Michael Maniscalco, and assistant town manager, Mr. Scott Roberts, and any other appropriate personnel deemed necessary.
We have a second? All, um, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seeing none. We are going to be adjourning the regular meeting from our executive session and will not be returning to this location, so I wish everyone a good night and a nice and safe summer.